Calling me for order, 6:00 PM. Sorry, I have 6:01. There you go. Uh, would you re- do your call please, sir? Mr. Stewart.
Here.
Mr. McCarthy.
Here.
Mr. Lewis.
Here.
Mr. Harrison.
Here.
Mrs. Petrie.
Yes.
Mr. Stevenson.
Here.
Mrs. Welker.
Here.
All right. I will ask you all to stand and say the pledge, if you're able.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda. Mrs. Petrie. Mr. Lewis. Those in favor of approving the agenda, please signify by raising your hand. 7-0, thank you, motion passes. All right, so we're gonna have some discussion on policy BBFA to see name. One member, conflict of interest and financial disclosure. Mr. Harrison?
Well, folks, here's the way I feel. I've been here for almost, what, 11, 12 years, and I find that a group of people, any group, that don't get their way, they come after the board to do this, to do that. We need to do something about the policy. That's true. But it ain't about that. It's about people not getting their way, lose their job, or they don't get promoted, they don't get this or that. And I'm tired of that. You know, when they come after me, I didn't see nobody standing up saying, "Oh, Mr. Harrison, we'll come to the board and help you." When I'm complaining about, "I need teachers, I want reading teachers to do something for these kids," I don't get no help. But when I come to a board and I see a bunch of phony stuff, and nobody-
Mr. Harrison, could you keep it to the policy, please? We're here to discuss the policy.
All right, but this is policy. You know, nobody asked me to change my policy.
Policy BBFA in particular, sir. Policy BBFA in particular.
I told you I had something to say.
Right.
And that's what it's about. It's got nothing to do, it's just people wanting to get their way. And I'm sick and tired of it. If you want to recall me, recall me. You want to help me next year, that's fine, I don't need to. But I'm gonna do what I have to do. If it's vote against you, that's just what I'm gonna do. But I'm gonna vote the way I want to vote, and nobody's gonna tell me how to vote. That's all I got to say.
Mrs. Petrie?
Okay, I mean, I've been very open about my opinion here. At the last meeting, I took the, I listened to the public who shared their opinions, et cetera, and I don't know about the rest of you, but in the last two months, I have been pulled off Queens, this, today it took me an hour to pick up my mail. We were gone for 10 days since the last board meeting. It took me ten, an hour to get, pick up my mail at the post office from people stopping me, strangers basically, kind of saying, "Are you really the one on the school board?" And they stopped me, somebody that I didn't even know, giving their opinions. And so, once I became aware that, whoa, people are gonna start actually talking to me, I kind of started keeping track, not necessarily of names, but just, and so I do have, as we talk, you know, later I'll share, you know, number of people that have actually over the last couple of months kind of shared their opinions. But I did take the old policy, which was what I felt the community kind of said to us, and, you know, made some changes in that, and basically for us to have a starting point so we could have discussion, and then turn it over to MSBA to preview, rewrite, give suggestions, et cetera. So I don't know if anybody, you know, looked at this when I gave it to you, but that's, you know, those things, I felt, my personal opinion, at times have been a little bit stricter than that, but the three things, number one, with the law is, you know, we as board members should not vote for those within the board affinity and-
Consanguinity.
Thank you. And then I included a little change on this second level for not only board, but central office people to the second degree, as far as actually hiring family. And then the big one that pretty much, people that talked with me almost 100%, that even if they didn't 100% agree with the other two, was the supervisory. And so that's where I had added the discussion of possibly CGI, that the staff will not be assigned, where they would be under the supervision of a person related within the second degree. So that's, that's how this came about. The teacher thing, that's that you gotta have somewhere to start.
Yep, yep.
And so that's my discussion to throw out there.
And just so that we can all understand, consanguinity and affinity, and what the degrees are, can you pull that up there?
If you've got this one.
And you can't bring that home, you can't.
Yeah, it shows up there.
So-
You want me to bring it up?
You're the teacher, so yeah, why don't you get up there?
I bet I used to get paid more for that one, though. Let me see, 1, 2, 3. Number 2, so it would be spouse, up to spouse's grandparents. Here goes 2, spouse's sister, brother, okay, here goes 2nd, I'm short, though. It would come down, it basically goes by the number that's underneath. So that would include the 2nd. And if you want to see what the first one is, it's basically the number underneath. 1, 1, doo-doo. But personally, I just added the 2nd because I felt it was a compromise.
And so, just so that everybody understands and we're on the same page, can you, I don't want to belabor this, but-
Okay.
Can you-
Read those?
Speak to exactly what they are there.
Okay.
And the difference between consanguinity and affinity.
Okay. Affinity is, I'm having a migraine headache today. Affinity, and correct me if I'm wrong, affinity is by marriage, correct? And confini- or consanquity is actually blood related.
Good.
So if you're doing 2nd, here's a board member, so that would be me, oh boy, lucky me, also my spouse, husband, et cetera, that's the 0. First level would be spouse's parents, so it would be my husband's parents. It would be his children, that would include my kids, child and spouse, would be parents and spouse, related to me. Second level, spouse's grandparents, so my husband's grandparents, spouse's, his sister's brothers, so his immediate family growing up, spouse's grandchildren, that's the grandchild and spouse, sister, brother and spouse of me, and grandparents of me and spouse, and their spouses. So that would be the 2nd.
The 3rd?
Okay.
No, the 2nd.
Third?
Sorry.
That's where mine stopped. Now, if you go to the actual law, it includes everybody on here as far as we as individual board members actually being able to vote. So that would mean that if someone was in this element, we would get up, leave the room, conversation takes place. I'm not gonna call Dan McCarthy and say, "You know what, you need to vote in my favor because da-da-da, none of that horse trading, et cetera's taking place, but I'm gone, I'm not gonna influence any of that," and the vote takes place, without me involved in it at all. And I'm not gonna call administrator in the building and say, "You know, my relative needs a job."
And that's state law.
And that's state law.
To the 4th degree, so that never left.
Right. That's still there.
So was our, our, the one we approved in 2013, was that-
It still included us.
Well, I'm saying, law, I mean, what was the, where were we at with the, did we change anything, Doc, or, I mean, with the law? Does it-
We changed-
For the constitution, or?
No, no.
What did it happen, I mean, did we take away anything?
We pulled, before, it included the superintendent to the 4th degree. And we pulled the superintendent portion out, just leaving it to board.
Right. But I'm saying, the current policy we have, you know, we legally, the law, the-
Absolutely.
It's the 4th degree, we leave the room, et cetera. You can hire anybody.
And so, what your, the-
Just my discussion starter, yes.
Your discussion starter would be 2nd degree for central office administrators. So we're talking about-
As well as us.
We're talking about grandparents, grandparents-in-law, parents, parents-in-law, spouse, kids and their spouses, in-law, children and their spouses, which would be your candidate.
And to be very honest, personally, why I went-
And their, and their siblings and grandchildren.
Yes. And why I personally chose to go to the 2nd degree instead of starting with the 1st was basically the sister and brother, you know? That, to me, could be a concern, but that's why I personally started there. And again, this was just a discussion starter.
Mr. Harrison?
There was this law when I was complaining about it, for people voting. There was this law, Ed, when we was, when we was, when I was complaining about people not having the right to vote.
I'm not sure what you're referring to.
Well, we had, we had a lot of people we fired, and I said, "No, you can't vote." Just like when you were taking, have, give raises. And we voted, we all voted to accept the negotiations now. And everybody but me and Dan McCarthy had relations in the school.
My understanding is if it's for that specific person, if it was a raise for my wife-
Well, that's, that's-
Hold on, for her daughter, for your relative, then no. But if it says a whole, everyone's getting the same thing, then it's legal. And my understanding is that was brought to the lawyer in years past, and it is legal.
Well, that's, that's not the way I understand it. It is that you can't vote because you have somebody in this school, and this goes on and it's been going on. And I've been fighting it and fighting it. Ain't nobody come to my aid and say, "Hey, let's, let's get something done here." Nobody.
Well, I know that has been clarified by legal counsel, by MSBA, by our legal counsel.
Do you think I believe that legal counsel?
I know you don't believe in any of it, so, but it's what they tell us.
What do they tell us about the situation we're in?
Well-
I mean, as of the last.
What we have now is legal.
Right. I mean, what do they tell us now, just, other than bring it to the public, and the public, and now we-
Well, we haven't referred anything to, other than, I mean, we got the-
If we're legal and, and, all right.
Yeah, I mean, they, we haven't got any changes to include additional, because we're within what state statutes-
But over the past many years, I mean, and I don't know how many years it actually goes back to, but Gilzwell added, excuse me, the nepotism clause, you know, for reasons. And it wasn't just in the last 2 years. I mean, it has been, you know, passed, da-da-da-da. And I think that when this all disappeared in executive session, without the public being aware of it, without administrators, the staff being aware of it, then it hit the fan, because it was like the endcoming.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yeah, I have a question, it's a little bit off, a little bit, but we've been compared to Fox in the leader publication locally, and the difference between us and Fox is that Fox is a bigger school district, has quite a bit of retail and commercial business, and there is, there is an institutionalized type of nepotism there. Here it's been layered, and basically it's built on a small town. I know a lady who saw here back in the 70s and 80s, and she goes, "Oh, nepotism." Oh, everybody was a relative at one time. And that's because we're a smaller town. Actually, the best career almost is a teacher, you know, or be in education in here, otherwise we're inundated with lawyers, you know, and government people. But other than that, the teacher is the best place to find a home, right? And I think that that's really the difference in our situation, but the editors up there don't seem to think so. They carry on some stuff. But I think that the municipal people here, that's why I'm, need to go out and help us get a little bit industry and stuff to help the school. And not look at the school as the cash cow all the time. The cow, you know, it's been, look at the cash cow, and we have these fantastic little partnerships, or 70/30 and things like that, and I think they need to look at it a little bit more. Thank you.
So I have a question for you, Beth, and I'm just, and I know this was just a draft that you, that you put together, and so, my, if, and I think we do need to have a change to it. I guess we need to decide how far that change needs to go.
Well, that's just type of everybody does.
But the, one thing I do think we need to talk about is, well, in the language you have here, and I would think it would need to be changed because it says that just a central office administrator. So I think, I mean, in the previous policy, it said superintendent.
It said specific, right, so-
Right. So I would think we would need to be specific about what that is, because central office administrator could mean Dr. Korman, it could be, mean, Mr. Ray, it could mean Dr. Isaacson, it could mean Mrs. Genge, it could mean-
See, I don't look at Mrs. Genge as a administrator.
She's an administrator.
Okay.
But she's not a certified administrator. But, I mean, it depends on how things are defined. And so that's why I said we need to be careful in-
I know my opinion.
And, you know, it could probably even mean Mrs. Jackson, I don't know, but-
It means Stephen Murray.
Okay.
And when I use that term, I was looking at superintendent and assistant superintendents, the ones that truly have undue influence on employees of the hiring practice.
Okay.
Because, you know, personally, you know, 2 teachers coming in, working side by side, okay, but one, when one becomes a building administrator, then, you know, that can be an issue.
So?
I like to see it taken all the way down, uh, right down to custodians. I see so much of it, and these young kids going to school for 4 years, they get out of the school, and they can't get a job, because somebody else knows Mr. Harrison, and he gets them a job. They spent 4 years of their life in school, and there's no jobs for them, because relatives has got them all sold up. So if you want to do something, let's do it for all, don't just do it for one. If you, if you try to pick out, now, this is my opinion, if you try to pick out a certain person to stop them from getting, getting their people on there, to me, that's discrimination. You have to go all the way down to the custodian, bus driver, and say, "No, if you got somebody working here, you don't get a job here." And get this hiring situation put out, where we taking our, the best people for a job, not the one that fits in, if we want to do something. Let's think about these kids, which we don't.
And just going with what Dan said, and what you said there, I mean, there's, the small town that we're in, I'm telling you, I bet you half our employees are related within 4 degrees to somebody else that's in the, that's in the district.
But you're not, you're not gonna do anything until you, you start down there, they stop this stuff. I just found out somebody, I thought they come from Texas, we're hiring people from Texas, or this or that, who may have kids getting out of school, they can't even get a job. I run into them all the time, you know, I like to go out and bump. I run into young people that can't get a job in a teaching degree unless they know one, somebody. And then I met one, they got a, got a job in a certain school because their dad worked for that school. Is that right? That she gets this job because her dad worked for this school, and these other ones don't get a job because they, they don't have nobody?
I think, I think, yeah, I think that's, does that happen here? Sure it does. Does it happen here? I don't think so. We have hiring committees for positions.
Oh, my God.
Lisa.
Well, I think the supervisory portion of it really needs to be the part that we focus on, too, because, you know, we have, we have people that are related that work within the district, but one may be, you know, you have a husband and wife, one may be in one building and one in the other, and during the course of the school year, they really don't come in contact, their paths don't cross. But if the, if the husband is the administrator and the wife is, you know, a teacher, and they have something that happens, and they try to apply for something within that building, that could be the problem. Or even the evaluation part of it, you know? And I know personally, there were many times when that happened, you know, and I think that's why the policy was changed and set into motion the way it was, because of some of those incidences in the past. And I don't, I think as long as they're not crossing paths, and they're not being held accountable by a family member, then it's not, it's not that big of a deal, because they're, like you said, the community's small, and we're all related to a lot of people here in this town.
So that makes it right?
No.
Does that make it right, because you-
You think we have trouble filling positions now? If we, if we, if we put it all point down, Mr. Harrison, down to custodians and bus drivers, we would have so many vacancies that you couldn't fill, because, "Oh, you know what, I'm applying to be a bus driver, but I've got a cousin that is a custodian over here." And do custodians and bus drivers, do they have influence on each other's being hired, or on their management? They don't know.
The only thing I've seen since the time I've been here, and that was in getting substitute bus drivers. But I've seen a lot of it, where people come from out of state and got a job here, and somebody else's kid today, that's got a degree, can't even get a job. And for you to think that I'm gonna go along with this, that's crazy.
But there's a lot of factors why they didn't get that job, too.
Something I think about, too, though, with that is, you know, if someone coming from out of state has 5 years or 10 years experience in teaching, well, that's gonna be, that candidate's gonna be, have an edge on anybody else who's just coming out with a degree. And that's true in any field, not just teaching. I mean, you know, if I'm hiring, you know, if I was hiring a pharmacist, I want someone that has been out there working for 10 years and knows the ins and outs versus a new graduate who's trying to learn how to be a pharmacist. I mean, there's, there's so many different factors, it's not just cut and dry, "Okay, you know Billy Joe Jim Bob, so you're gonna come here and get a job." No, there's so many factors that go into it. Experience, level of degree, what degree do they have? Maybe they have extra certifications that qualify them more versus somebody else. There's so many different factors that go into it, it's not just one cut and dry, boom, 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 this type of thing. And that's, that's what those committees look at. That's one of the many things that they look at, is what's going on there.
But here's the thing, here's, here's what moms do. This is a community, okay? It's not, it's not a outside workplace where you, where you get a job. It's a community. We should be looking at the community, and getting our kids back in here to teach.
Even if they're not the most qualified? Even if these kids are not the most qualified?
And that's why in a lot of cases, we had them do their student teaching here, and they subbed here, or they took on different positions that were non-certified, non-certified positions, to get to, to learn the ins and outs, and they get to be, their skills become known, and they know what they can do and what they can't do. And then that gives them-
An edge.
Yeah, more of an edge. You have to start somewhere.
Well, you sure, you sure do. And that's make, make the hiring practices fair.
But a lot of teachers have-
Now, if you think that I go along with any hiring committee, you're wrong. You're dead wrong.
Well, I've sat on many of those hiring committees.
Well, yeah, don't, don't get me started.
Well, I'm, I'm gonna get you started, then. Because those committees, we do a lot in those committees. We're given names, whether it comes from an administrator, or whether it comes from the HR director, and then you go through those names, and you look at the applications, you look at, at how they're qualified.
Why weren't we allowed to talk on this?
Because this is, this is not even-
But we're a community without voice. And she, she's talking about a hiring committee when she told me-
Mr. Bradley, this is a work session of the-
That Mr. Korman had interference with that.
This is a work session of the board, and we're not, we're not taking public comment. We had that 2 weeks ago in 15.
You don't go and hear the community's opinion. We have no voice.
First, Dan, you said the leader, I wouldn't read the leader. I haven't, I've got a lot of people quit. You guys were talking about the hiring committee, and I mean, you know, it was told that, yeah, there was board members on the committee, there's nobody, no board members on the committee. They brought us what you just said, they did their due diligence, went through all the committees on the Ms. Korman deal, with the Ms. Marchetti deal, and brought them to us. The hiring committee, and so we, that, and we've done that from here now. Now, going about how that all happened with Ms. Korman's another poll ordeal, and I guess we're gonna lose funding there in a year, but they, that's who they said was the best. So many, many times, whether it's a coach, a teacher, administrator, a raise, a superintendent, whatever, that's who brings it to our, for the board. We ask the questions, that's, that was our responsibility. So you keep, you say you're, you are all with the hiring committee, I mean, that's what we did. We hired who the, who 2 people are, I'm sorry. Mrs. Rame, Mrs. Rame came in and made her statement and plead, and told us, "This is, I want them both, I want, you know, we need them, blah, blah, blah. This school has 5, this school has 4, this school has 2, we have money, let's do it." So that's what we did. So, I mean, I, we did go with the hiring committee, I mean, and there was no board members on the hiring committee. I will say this, I mean, as far as the degrees, my sister-in-law, I was asked by 3 previous board members to run for the board, and numerous people from town, they said, "You're running for board? Sure, I'll do it." You know, community service. Never, ever thought about my sister-in-law, my brother's wife, who's been caught in custody for years, stayed at home, had kids, decided to get a job 3, 4, 6 years before, I don't even know what it was. I don't even know what grade she teaches, kindergarten, 1st or 2nd, but it's over there, I don't know. So, sorry, I, still today, we've never had a school discussion. Not like on purpose, it just doesn't even cross my mind when I see her. You know, I, I don't, I'm sure you're the same with your daughter, I doubt if, it's like, oh, here's secret information. So I think she's doing a great job from what I'm told, I've never had a kid, I maybe had a kid in there, I honestly should know this, I think maybe Bella. So, but to me, it's kind of like, she's the right person for the job. Should I back down because she's my sister-in-law, now that I'm realizing, shoot, I ran for the board, and I should, and she might, you know, blah, blah, blah? And what drives me crazy, and we talk about it- And what drives me crazy, and we talk about it every stinking month, is the subs. Like I have a sister on the subs, she's been on there before I was involved. I have to exclude her name. I think it's goofy, it's stupid. I mean, it's like, we're talking about with your wife, I mean, it's like, if it's the whole thing, it's the whole thing. Am I trying to get my sister a nickel more? No way, you know? It's ridiculous. But I'll tell you, you know, you said you talked to a lot of people at the post office. I've seen twenty, thirty, fifty people. The night of the hearing, the meeting, I was at Casey's and people are like, what the heck are you talking about, nepotism meeting? I said, just come. Couple people did show up. I talked to elderly man at church the other day. He had five kids through here. And the guy with him said he had six kids through here. And I'm talking, the youngest one's probably forty years old. And they're, they said, you can't, you know, the nepotism is no different than favoritism. They've all had bad experiences with past administrators, past coaches, past everything. You know, every teacher in the school's kid gets preference. Every kid gets to do this, do this. I said, man, you need to come and do your forum. I don't know what to tell you. But they compared nepotism and favoritism the same. I said, well, you kind of got a point, you know? I mean, if we're hiring this person or this kid's getting special treatment in this math class or whatever, you know, I mean, there's a lot of things. This thing could go on just like that math. I mean, you could have big great-great-grandma up out of the grave and say, well, you can't be hired, you know? So whatever we're doing, we just need to figure it out. I mean, every policy we have now needs changed at some point. I mean, we talked about it. We changed that one there, we brought it in. My understanding was because it was personnel, okay, back in 2013. And I'm almost a hundred percent sure we did talk personnel on that night. So, and as far as Mrs. Corman, I'll stick by it here. She was employed at the school that we went and interviewed Dr. Corman. Whether everybody likes her or not, we discussed that. And we still hired him and we still hired her. And he never pushed me to vote. I don't think he pushed you. I don't think he pushed anybody. Vote for my wife or vote for this, okay? And he was removed whenever we did. So I, I agree. It's rubbing a lot of people wrong. She's gonna be out of here in a year. Unfortunately, she was probably one of the best for the position, from what I'm told. I don't go supervisor. I'm nobody. I make it to the board meetings. I read my packet. I go through things, ask people, see people, answer questions, encourage them to come to the meeting. So whatever you gotta do, we need to do it right. Do it right the first time, you know? Don't make it this superintendent or this superintendent, this administrator, and change it every five years. Oh, hey, well, it didn't work out. Let's do this. Let's work it, you know? Do it right the first time.
And I agree. Can I do that too? Okay. I agree with lots of things there.
Sure.
You know, you were on the board after the employee was hired. Every single one of us was that, you know? So we were not actively involved in that. And even to the point that, you know, daughter's name was on the list for rehire, I did not have anything, you know, her name was on the list, but I did not vote for her rehire because I don't want any perception that I'm doing that. I was on the board when we went through that discussion and Mr. Stewart brought up, you know, lots of questions. One thing that did bother me is Dr. Cor- Corman sat there and listened to all of it and it's like, you know? And at that time, I was a newbie, so I didn't say, you know, you really should leave the room again for perception. You know, I did call and talk to some of the people on that committee because I kept hearing, you know, da, 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 that things maybe didn't go quite right. And when I called and talked to some of those specific board members, not board members, I'm sorry, committee members, there was a lot of differences in what they thought was going down. They knew they were hiring one person, but some of them thought that if the second position was going to be approved by the board, that there would be another round of interviews. And so, you know, we, you know, I threw out that there were some discrepancies, but nobody questioned me as to, you know, what were the discrepancies? Because nobody was really, my opinion, I'm not sure they were really listening or maybe they didn't care. I didn't have any credibility at the time. I don't have a clue, you know, what went on.
I wanna.
So it's a perception thing. And we need to get back to the policy. I didn't want to bring up old stuff.
Yeah, yeah, and, yeah.
But I think the one is.
I want to ask you a question. Dennis Bradley got up, that's why I wanted to kind of explain that.
Can you go back to that tree?
And I have no qualms.
Or whatever, and the tree. So I'm just curious. If we're doing second degree.
Say every day.
How many of board members or administrators, just start with Dr. Corman, Dr. Isaacson, Mrs. Rain, do, does anybody have a spouse working here? Yes.
No. Sorry.
That's right. About parents or spouse of parents?
I did have a parent that worked here before, when you were a teacher.
You're right. But not current. Great parents.
Families have families?
No. Brother, sister, or brother-in-law, sister-in-law? I got a sister-in-law.
I got a sister-in-law.
So that's two. So right now, it's one, two, three, four. Child or child-in-law, five, six? Grandchild?
I will not.
You're not gonna be on that?
No, I will be dead by that time.
Say that.
So.
She's only four, one of them.
Because I just wanted to see what the, you know, and so that's, that's just us. And then if we look at supervisory, so was your supervisory like all administrators? Was all like building administrators?
Building administrators, supervisory over to the second degree.
To the second degree, which would be the same ones, Dr. Cornio of.
Dr. Friedman will have a brother-in-law that she supervises.
So there's one of us.
That's something we can't do nothing about right now, but we need to stop it.
Am I leaving anyone out?
So there's only one. And. I'm, you know, personally, it's kind, this is kind of like, you know, those of us that have relatives that were already employed for five years, ten years, and then we were elected, the community knew that upfront.
Yeah, maybe it didn't, but, I mean, it's always answered, it's always asked in the form we have.
And, you know, to me, that's different than me sitting here and now I'm gonna hire my son-in-law to take Stephen Murray's spot because he's pretty good, right? John missed that.
Mr. Corman.
My son-in-law, remember?
The question that I have is this. When you're talking about as a board collectively, the second degree, that's, I guess, more redundant than anything else because the board by law, you're the fourth degree. You don't need yourself listed as a second degree.
That's true. You're right.
Is that not, I'm not reading that wrong. You're right, you're right. You're absolutely right.
The board's.
Well, okay. My interpretation, and this is where my wording is obviously gonna be wrong, but the fourth degree is I get up and leave the room, the district could still hire someone related to me. I'm just not involved in it.
Correct.
To the second degree, no. Because I'm a sitting board member, I would have to give up my spot.
So your interpretation is from two to four is okay, but from one to two, it's no dice across the board?
As long as I'm on the floor.
Okay.
The best way to get rid of me is give my mother a promotion and then I'm gone.
Yeah, because I was confused by that too, because you had the fourth degree and then you had the second degree.
Because one is leave the room and it's okay. The other one is I'm going to influence the employment of that relative because I'm here in this spot. Kind of like the end of Influence, basically, just because my name is Gerald.
So.
What?
She has a different last name?
Yeah, yeah. And so that would be a question on the application. And then that would be a fraudulent thing if they answered incorrectly. And then if it came out six months later, a year, then they're gone. Because they lied.
There could be your spouse's family so huge, you still don't know half of her cousins.
Oh, cousins, what are cousins?
Oh, yeah.
Fourth cousins, cousins are.
Most of them don't live around here.
Fourth degree up here. We're talking, surely you're gonna know first and second degree.
Oh, you have a first cousin and a fourth, yeah. First cousin is spouse is first cousin.
Yeah, I know, it's that same way, first cousin is spouse.
So it's basically, when I suggest a second degree, to me, that is your immediate family, including your spouses.
Right.
But that was for administration to second degree? Is that what you were talking about?
Yeah, and that's as well, as far as actually.
Well, for us, that's a given.
Yes.
But in front of the administrators, it was at least to the second degree.
Okay, so.
And I was, my central office, I included superintendent and assistant superintendent. So John cannot hire his brother away from the sorrow to come here. He can't hire his wife. He wouldn't be able to hire his wife to come here. It's all his fault. I just used, I saw it, I used it as a example. But that would, that's, you know.
So in, if we were gonna do it to this, to this level.
And they could be.
We. In existing situations that we have with supervisory or folks that are within that second degree currently in the positions that they are in, I would assume we would have to have some language in there.
Read the last sentence.
Yes, I was leading you.
Okay. Uh-oh, you're setting a trap.
I wasn't setting a trap. I was leading you to discuss that portion of it, because that's important too. I mean, we don't want to penalize.
Right.
We don't want to penalize.
A current employee who's related to a serving board member or central office administrator within the second degree or of secrety or affinity can only be recommended for rehiring in his or her current position or lateral position. So they could stay where they are or.
But if they try to move positions?
If they wanted to move, my daughter teaches kindergarten, if she wanted to move to the fourth grade, then that's a lateral position, a teaching position. If she wanted to become a. Right? Or reading specialist, that would be, I would give up my spot too.
Would we do something similar in the supervisory language that you're talking about?
I would, I would think if it's already given, I wouldn't necessarily take something away. It's already been established.
So you mean if an administrator, Scott went to junior high, that would be lateral for him? Is that what you mean for a supervisor?
Going back to the Freeman, you said Freemans are the only ones that at this point fall into that, right?
Yes, ma'am.
So that if, as long as Clint Freeman does not change. As husband, sorry, Lee. Okay, as long as Lee is in his spot and Kathy Freeman is in her spot, that is current, they're gonna be there. But if he wanted to move up to, say, assistant principal, director of whatever, then it would have to be in a different building. Because that wouldn't be a lateral move, that would be. Right? And just simply not in the same, because they wouldn't be supervisory at that point. Because they would be out from under the relative, they would be under Scott being out.
But they're currently under, Kathy already supervises.
Correct, correct. Because there's not a supervisory clause.
Well, that's one of them.
A coach can't be a principal right now, can he?
I don't know that that's a written policy.
I mean, I know the guy that's bashing again, knocked out, he had to get taken, he was a principal on there and told him he had to get out.
I know a lot of school districts do that.
It was either a coach or a principal.
Right.
Captain Coach, he's a president.
But if he wanted to be an assistant, if he wanted to be assistant principal, he would need to go to another building instead of the high school where his sister-in-law is. That's, that's the purpose of the supervisor. And there were.
Either a buddy or two.
Correct. I was gonna tell you. I had seventy-two strangers over the course of the last two months share that point of view with me. People I did not, I don't even track all people.
Mr. Harrison?
I must be deaf because nobody ever bothers me.
Maybe you're not friendly enough.
Oh, I'm plain. I'm out there voting you or John or anybody else. They don't bother me with this. Because they know how I feel. If you're gonna do it for one and you're gonna just pick out certain people, then you need to go all the way back. All the way back. You're picking out Lee Freeman or anybody else. If they got somebody here or wrong, they can't, they can't move up. If they're here, they should, if they're here, they should be able to go wherever they want to go.
Just not in the same building, because you're setting up problems.
We shouldn't do that. We should not, to me, this stuff is discriminating. And that's all it is. I want to see that policy last. I, but I didn't get to see it.
This policy?
No, our policy, when we voted on it, I didn't get to see the policy.
Two thousand thirteen?
Yes.
I didn't see it either.
But you know, I didn't see nobody stand up then and say nothing about it.
Because we didn't know about it, Bo. It was an executive session. When did it come, when did this come out? It, when I signed my name to run for the school board in December of two thousand thirteen, everything was nice, cool and calm. It didn't come out until the hiring season of like April, May of two thousand fourteen. And I started thinking, what in the world did I get myself into?
So.
Seriously, that's when it hit the fan.
Getting back to the language of the policy.
You must not have been around here because I was, I was making noise about it.
I was working it.
Getting back to the language of the policy.
Yeah, I'm hopeful.
So, does. So if we're gonna, if we're gonna base it off of Mrs. Petrie's.
Suggestions.
Suggestions, thank you. So we're talking about, I mean, the, yeah, the board is law, fourth degree.
Right, that's a good.
Yeah. Make it second degree for, and I would think we definitely need to define the position. So second degree for superintendent, assistant superintendent, and associate superintendent?
Yes.
So those are the three positions in, in hiring.
To the second degree.
So it goes on just like it's always been going on?
No.
Where's the policy at that we turned down? Let's go, let's go by that policy.
I'm gonna finish my thought here. And GCI, which is a separate policy, we would need to, or what your suggestion is, is second degree for supervision could not occur. Within the second degree, supervision could not occur.
Correct, right.
So.
And that's the policy that identifies like assignment of staff.
Right.
After they've been hired.
Right. So I'm gonna pull the board here on, because we have to have this BBFA passed and to the Missouri Ethics Commission by September fifteenth, so that means we need to pass this. Yeah, at the August meeting. So I'm assuming you can live with your own suggestion.
Yes, I can. I can live with my own suggestions.
Okay.
That doesn't necessarily mean I can't live with other things as well.
Right, I understand.
Like I said, it was a starting point.
And I'm just gonna go around the table. Mr. McCarthy, for your.
This for the MSBA? Going down there?
BBFA.
No, no, on this language we've been talking about on BBFA.
Yeah.
Second degree for, second degree affinity for superintendent, assistant, and associate. Fourth degree for wardens is a given, yeah. And then no supervisory at second degree or less.
And assistant.
Yeah.
Assistant, assistant, associate.
Yes. Eric?
Yes.
John?
What, so the only thing is change the word is adding supervisor to the.
No, we're adding superintendent, assistant superintendent, and associate.
Those three, and one more.
Those three. And then the other policy, GCI, second degree for supervisor.
Sure. Sure.
You give that?
Aight.
Lisa? Mr. Harrison? You're not good with that. I am good with that.
Do it all, and don't be discriminating against people. Discriminating when you pull people out like that.
So that would be, okay, so if you would, Dr. Freeman, if you followed that, I'm assuming you did. Get tho, that language.
But I wanna be clear, so we're putting, as, as up here on the screen, I moved to amend language to BBFA based on his reply between two thousand fifteen, or nineteen ninety-five, two thousand thirteen, which includes board members not voting. So are you wanting me to take this information down here and put it into this information on the top up here?
Are we going through the MSBA?
Yes, yes.
You know, I don't have too much faith in, you know, that.
I understand, that's where we get our policy.
We could send to the.
I don't think too much.
And we can, I mean, we can have our attorney review it too, if.
Okay, I just don't have too much faith in that group.
Okay.
So what I'm asking is, this lightened area up here was the old policy. This information down here in this motion, are you wanting me to tell MSBA to take the ninety-five and two thousand thirteen policy and add this stuff to it?
I think your, I think your second page here is making that.
That was Freeman's words in doing that.
Right, here is what that reads.
Yeah, except for making that.
Still out.
That a central office administrator.
Okay, so right here, we're gonna make that.
Limiting anything that gets us in hot water.
Sue, associate, sue, and assistant. Okay, so this right here is what you want me to send to MSBA and the school's attorney, as well as the addition to GCI, which, scroll down here. This'll work, okay, so you want this GCI added, correct?
No.
Correct. Okay, and delete this, and align it to the BBFA up here.
Yeah, yeah, because we have to have all those aligned, because that's.
That's correct.
We don't need to be in hot water with having policies in conflict with each other.
And I am to send it to MSBA, their legal counsel, as well as to the school district's legal counsel.
Yes.
John?
Sir.
Is this the work session?
Yep.
And I'm the.
On certain policy?
On BBFA, yes, sir.
So the old policy that we had?
Mm-hmm.
That should be run out, not hers. We did not vote that in.
No, we didn't.
It's not gonna be.
No, we haven't.
We should be having the whole contract here. We're not conditioning nothing.
We're talking about adding language to it, because I think everybody's fine, because we've talked about that the last, what, two meetings? Three? So we've talked about that policy, but this is adding this language to that policy.
To the old ones.
Yes.
And you're not gonna do nothing to protect our kids getting jobs that spend four years in college to get a job, come back here to get a job. It's gonna be the same thing, I watched it, and you can say whatever you wanna say, the hiring committees should be gone. We have an HR person, and he should handle this. That should be put in there.
That's, that's procedure, not about.
One thing, and I guarantee you, if somebody wants to challenge, they'll win. And then there's a school having to pay out money. You're discriminating against these members.
We clear?
Yes, I have a question, more prior.
No, I'm not following you.
The word prior, does that prior to the employment of strictly per central office? Because down here, that doesn't include any of these folks. Like I'm thinking of.
No, 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 because, because, yeah, and it's, yeah, good clarification, we wanna, because we don't wanna penalize any existing employees.
The question I had was, was that the word prior, because, for example, Lee Freeman was hired after Kathy Freeman, and she supervises him. So I wanted to make sure what we meant by the word, or, excuse me, the board's intention was with the word prior, because in that instance, does that mean you're, you're serving employment account? That, that's one question I know will be brought up.
I mean, I would not think that we're doing that, me that.
And it's not the intent.
Right, the BBFA was actually dealing with central office administrators and board members. Did not have to do with direct supervisors or supervisors.
Right, but it's being added in here now, so I just wanted that for clarification.
So GCI is the actual assigning of staff policy.
Okay.
And it's just kind of clarifying that when that staff member is assigned, they're not going to be assigned in a position where someone to the second degree will be their supervisor. From, to me, in my opinion, is from the stakeholders. We aren't gonna go back, just like the board members, we aren't gonna go back and make all of our relatives.
I think you should read that whole thing, it's about if administration recommends the reemployment of.
Someone currently employed.
Somebody who's currently employed but related within the second degree of the central office administrator or a board member.
They're not.
No, 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 no. That.
No, no, the way it reads is if it's the second degree, they're not getting hired, period.
No, it's, it can only be recommended, they can be recommended for rehire in their current position or a lateral position somewhere else in the descent, in the district. And that's why.
Yeah, so we're not booting anybody from the current position. In a lateral, in a.
This was the one I was. The reason I'm asking for these clarifications is because MSBA is gonna ask, so I'm gonna have to send it either to Director Stewart to answer, or.
I see, because it says not vote to employ, and we vote to employ every year.
That's the question, that, that's right there, that's the sentence.
So there's gonna have, yeah, so.
So you know the intent, so they have to come up with a language that.
I wanna make sure of the intent.
Intent. That's where I was reading that, is that we're not penalizing any existing.
Okay, I wanna jot that down.
Yeah.
Gonna send that to the policy committee too, don't you?
Uh, we can't have that done before September fifteenth. And that's when it has to be the ethics command, Missouri Ethics Commission.
Okay, how do I finish this sentence?
So we're validating a policy, definitely.
No, we are not.
Well, you had three readings. For this in July, will be July, I think, thirty.
How did you finish that sentence? If I have questions, I'll just call you.
Okay.
I'll just call you, tell me what, tell me.
Okay, okay. Um, Dr. I. We need to have a, we need to set a date here before the start of school on the thirteenth. Dr. I?
Twelve?
Thirteenth.
Thirteenth.
School starts on thirteenth. We need to have a special, we need to set a meeting for a special executive session to hire for some positions that we need to fill.
I thought we were on that tonight.
No, that's separate. So, take a look at your calendars if you would. Anytime within the next ten days.
The earlier the better, but when will we be ready?
We're interviewing Paris on the sixth. Would be.
Monday.
Monday.
The tenth.
No Friday night. No, they don't take you long.
Yeah, what's everybody's calendar look like between the, you say you're interviewing on the sixth, Dr. Isaacson?
Dr. Isaacson.
Excuse me, so you're interviewing on the sixth?
For the Paris test.
So sometime after, between after the sixth and, so from the seventh to the twelfth, somewhere between the seventh and the twelfth, we need to have a meeting.
How many people you got?
Four or five.
You're looking at hour at most, depending upon discussion?
Well, we just give permission to hire, and we don't have to go to a. We never do, we never know to see who, who's being hired, anybody, we just.
We always, we always.
Well, you know, the, the central office, we don't have the power to hire, that law's been given to.
Well, we did give permission to hire.
You could say place somebody that, tell them they're hired officially on the, but.
So what's your calendars look like?
Tenth, Monday night.
Monday night to tenth, Monday night to tenth? I, I'm working. Okay. I can try and get that switched. Uh, the next.
The eleventh.
The eleventh. Okay, I got an open house. I got it, but. I like your words.
The tenth will be open house too.
Yeah, the tenth will.
Tenth and last.
I'm gonna ask a question, don't hang me, what about Sunday evening?
No.
No, no.
Okay. That was just a question. Just a question.
You hope you don't burn all the.
Just a question. Uh, do you, what's, what's your schedule, I mean?
On, on what day?
Monday.
I work two to ten.
Can you take like a break?
Can we come?
My sleeve, please.
We send the van down.
These telecops from the, from the.
Do you have an office down?
It's a great.
We've always, we've done this before, and it ain't no big deal, it ain't like no, nothing that, uh, when you come here and say we wanna hire this, we always give permission anyway. And if I can jump up and down about knowing that the person shouldn't be hired, they're still, they get hired. So just give them permission to hire.
Saturday morning, eight to seven.
We were like, you wanna come with me?
Just came back.
I know I'm busy.
Well, open houses. Open houses.
Huh?
Yeah, because. Who we open house?
We can't do that.
You coming up in this mess?
What about Thursday night? This Thursday night?
But he's not interviewing until Friday.
No, he's interviewing Thursday, Thursday sixth.
Can you guys recommend recommendations by then, or?
Yes, as long as we have time to get a hold of, check the references, but we could do that Friday, today.
Do that.
Yes. Can it be early Friday?
And at the very least, is if we don't find a good candidate, we'll just get a sub, because we're gonna get the right candidate. What I'm not gonna, hey, find somebody and squeeze them in there. But we'll, because that would be ideal from, we have some coaches that are in fall sports that we need to get hired, and that would assist us, that'd be fine.
What's gonna be fine?
It's just, we may not fill them all, hopefully we do, but, and if.
Is everyone a dance coaches?
So you're interviewing Thursday night?
Thursday.
Thursday.
Thursday, and all, all the administrators are bringing all the candidates.
So we need to do Thursday evening or Friday early evening.
Monday morning?
Monday morning.
Monday morning the tenth?
Seven o'clock?
Monday morning the tenth, oh, that's not good, but we can make it work, but really. Teachers, first day back, that's.
Monday morning?
We will.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What time does that start?
Um, the welcome back luncheon is on Wednesday from eleven, at eleven thirty. The high school's having a breakfast first thing Monday morning. But other than that, teachers.
What about the, um, the thing where some of the board members used to go?
That's on Wednesday at eleven thirty.
Oh, lunch?
Yes, so everyone's invited to attend that. At the high school in the auditorium.
Not lunch, just the.
Excuse me?
Not the lunch part, what time?
You're for the Paris and the coaches.
Everybody will be there.
We got four people? You're gonna hire four people?
I mean, we have two, three Paris maybe, and two coaches.
It's not like they're gonna be missed.
Three, and a potentially a health aide.
That'll be.
Yes, health services aide. But that'll probably be August.
If they're not here on the first day of school, they're not gonna be missed, are they?
Well, they're pretty important positions, you kinda hate to start school with who's not gonna be.
The coaches ain't gonna be happy, pardon?
Uh, that fall sports, I'm not for sure when they start practice, but that is. So they started today.
Bo, everybody's.
We all have to be here?
I just need four to hire.
Right.
As long as four will get, if that's gonna be an issue, then I'm wanting more than four. Because I have to have four to hire.
So what time is the breakfast at the high school Monday morning?
It's probably gonna be right at between seven thirty.
Yeah, I'll be there. I'll be one of the four.
Seven AM Monday morning?
Seven AM would be great.
Can.
Seven AM Monday morning.
What time Monday morning?
Monday, Monday morning the tenth. Seven AM.
Good.
One day?
Seven AM.
August tenth?
I thought you said ten.
Uh, seven, you know, the tenth at seven AM. Monday the tenth at seven AM.
Seven in the morning, Greg Harrison. Monday morning, seven AM.
You should do something out there.
We can take a breakfast over here.
So we're gonna have breakfast and a meeting?
No, we're gonna come here and you go to breakfast in the high school.
But we don't have to.
But you don't have to.
You're having a meeting and going to work. Some certain attire.
Same thing with on Wednesday, you're invited, which is the twelfth, at eleven thirty AM. That's when we introduce the board members and have lunch with the staff.
How long does that last?
Well, it depends, because it kinda goes all afternoon for teachers, but lunch probably about hour, hour and a half. But eleven thirty, I think, is exactly when we introduce the board.
Train till eleven, so I shoot up.
Sure.
So you don't eat first and then have your meat?
No, ma'am.
Oh, okay.
I'll, I'll check the schedule, actually, I think we're eating. I think we're eating at eleven thirty, correct, and that will be discussed, and then doing everything in the afternoon this year. Teachers want a little bit more time to get ready, so that's how.
But that was my question, is when?
Lunch at eleven thirty.
I don't wanna eat, I just wanna be.
I'll have to play it by ear, can I text you and let you know how it's going? Because I'm thinking we're gonna start twelve thirty. Twelve thirty was what we were shooting.
Okay, so twelve thirty for non-food, okay, I think that's what I put it down.
All right, so seven AM Monday the tenth, we'll have a special executive meeting. All right. All right, um, I will, uh.
I will leave them alone.
See, a, I will entertain a motion to recess for executive session, separate agenda will be provided to the board members, a roll call vote will be taken to enter into closed session in accordance with the revised Missouri statute six one zero point zero two one as agenda items relate to the following legal issues, hiring, firing, disciplining, or promotion of employees individually identifiable personnel records. Mr. Stevenson? And a second, Mr. Lewis? Roll call vote, please, sir.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Harrison?
No.
Mrs. Petrie?
Yes.
Mr. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mrs. Welker?
Yes.
Roll time, and it is six oh one, and it's seven oh nine PM.
Seven oh nine PM.
We will meet back in five minutes.